I know. But it's not really, actually, I bet you mine, mine is more so like your. It's not really.
I found a, like a high chair, I think it's not a high chair, but you know, it's like you're calling here and there, I'm thinking about bringing it out, but a little boot jet. They can see, open the door.
No.
I don't know if I would mind that or not, so.
I feel like we need to set up higher, because see, look, I'm like higher here. If I sit down with me, you'd hear the hot air.
Yeah. Yeah, I like things better.
Alright. I called the order this special, a work meeting, I guess is what it's called, for Monday, April twenty first. Um, I guess, we can just go right straight into discussions then, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So, we worked through, um, we went through all of the adjustments and spent some time on that. And, pretty much at the end of it, we had, um, the planning commission have, if I could summarize what, and two of the people here are different than the, than the people who were here at the time, felt like it was a real, there was a lot going on, there was a lot that we were doing, and didn't feel comfortable sending a positive or a negative recommendation. And, um, sending neutral recommendations isn't really a thing. So, um, so, we decided to table it, give everybody a couple of weeks to decide if there was any, anything to, um, change, or, or anything that anybody wanted to talk about, to really soak, soak it up. And so that's where we left off, and then Weston's suggestion was, we have a work meeting to work through anything, and, and discuss, change, whatever. So, I don't really have, like, anything to myself go through. Um, since then, um, Heather did send a, an email, and I believe these are, um, some, some, um, comments and things from Larry. So, I guess, I'm not really, I don't, I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to be in the driver's seat, when I've gone through everything that I had done. But if there's input from the, the commission, or, um, anything like that, I, I think that'd probably be the better way to go about it.
Would you be willing to walk us through, kind of, line by line?
Absolutely.
We vote on two or three things at a time?
I'd be more than happy to do that, where we talk everything in the R one, everything in the definitions, everything in the R one A.
Um, is Scott gonna be here? I don't think he is.
I don't, no.
So, is it okay if I let Tracy come up there and use the microphone, because you've been heavily involved in this, so then you can just kind of have a say?
Uh, we're at a work me, I mean, that's kind of weird to have more members than we have, but, it's a work meeting.
Okay, okay.
I think as long as we didn't have, like, more than five people actually voting on anything, I'd be alright.
Or you can just come up and, I guess, use the microphone if you want. Thank you for coming.
Okay, let's see, let me get this up.
Can you pull it up on our screen for us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, let me just pull up the last one. Yeah, yep. Alright. Well, uh, there you go. Oh wait, I had the clean version, that's what I wanted to bring up. Okay, so, basically, I went through, and we had a, we had a document that was, that was full of a lot of, lot of, uh, markups and things like that. Um, I think I would like to make sure that we, if we're gonna make edits, we go back and we make edits to the marked up version. Um, I mean, I suppose we could make any edits to this version, the problem with that is, we then end up with, well, I guess that's fine, I just, I, I, it's really nice to be able to show the original code versus the new, all the new changes. So I have now made a clean version of the changes. And if we make edits to this, there'll be edits upon edits, and it'll be hard to des, to dis, to, um, judge between the original version and, and all of the total edits.
You wanna go through the markup one?
So, that's what I'm saying, maybe let's talk through this, I will have the other one open, and if we make a change, I'll go make it on the other version.
Okay.
So we have all the markups on one document, you know what I'm saying? And I guess I could probably, we could make them here, and then I could go back and also change the other one myself in the off time. Maybe we could do that, just for making it easier, I'd be a little bit.
Too bad you can't get them both on the screen, go side by side.
I can, I can, I can split them side by side, I can try that. Um, if it, if it'll show up and be good enough, so. Um, so anyways, just to kind of talk everybody through, I broke them up into the sections, um, we have the definitions being edited, and then, um, essentially, we're editing the zoning code, the zones, for R one A. And then we get into R one. And then we get into the R two code. The R three code. And then we have the, the commercial districts, now two, one for general commercial, and then this one is all new code for downtown commercial. And then finally, we get into new code, written for manufactured homes, parks, and subdivisions. And, that's all we're, we're doing, is, is modifying some of those zones, and, um, modifying some definitions, and then creating those two new zones. Or, I mean, creating the new zone, and that new section on, on manufactured homes. So, um, and, I mean, I have, I'm not sure how, how you want to, Chair, if you want, um, I can, I can bring up some of the comments that, that Heather had sent over, that were, that were from, um, Larry, and we can address those, kind of, as we go through, or what, what are you thinking? What'd you like to see?
Uh.
Probably start at the front, and go all the way through.
Yeah, I think we can just address the comments, because I'm like, we went over, I mean, a lot of these definitions, we already went over a couple of times, if I'm correct on that, like, I know we've talked about them. Oh, nice. And I did listen to the meetings, I think I'm pretty much caught up on the comments that were made with Cindy and Larry.
Okay. So, and I haven't, um, I haven't been able to go, go through these, um, only just, I just scanned through them, um, but, and, the problem with them showing up like this, is it won't show the comments. Maybe it will.
So what, you add a?
It'll show the comments if I.
But add this comment there.
But, there's these other comments on the side, any time you've made a, an edit. So maybe that's fine, maybe there's enough comments there that it'll be fine. Um, okay, so we have, manufactured home is no longer mobile home after it's been permanently attached to a property, and by recording an affidavit of fixture with a county recorder. Um, and, so, as far as the "and," um, I don't know if "and" is needed, because that's how it is attached to the property, attached being a legal construct, not necessarily a physical construct. But we can leave "and" in there, because then it means both, once you add "and" in there. It, it's saying that you physically attached it, um, and you have legally attached it by recording an affidavit of fixture with a county recorder. And the point is, is that later it says, um, um, and received a receipt for surrender of title, which is, I think is good, to, to keep them consistent.
And so, what would be the point of taking the "and" out?
So I think they speak that other language, you have to go all the way back to the existing code.
No, because I, th- this wasn't in the existing code. It's a new definition. Um, so, w- we could add in that, um, that other receipt for the surrender of title. So, do you see what I'm saying with the "and"?
Yeah.
Um, because, w- the way it was in, originally intended, was that you're fixing it, you're permanently attaching it by recording that, m- meaning it's entirely a legal thing. Um, I, and, and, and of course, in our actual code, it describes doing both. Um, so you can build a single family dwelling, or one manufactured home, and then it talks about having a continuous permanent masonry foundation, yada, yada, yada. That's not fixing the home, that's putting it on a foundation. Um, and then it says, the manufactured home is affixed to the lot by recording. So, again, fixing it has always been this legal construct, by recording the affidavit of a fixture. Um, and I, and I don't know if that has to be in the definition, but it doesn't hurt to have "and" in all of these places, saying it's physically affixed, and it is legally affixed, by doing both. So if you guys would like, we can just make that consistent throughout, that we have the "and" in there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that works.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it reads better and is less confusing if the "and" is in place.
Yeah, I like it too.
Hi, Jerry.
Yeah, we're glad to have Jerry here.
I know.
And I get an "and." Oh, it's an "Amen," sorry.
Oops. I don't know what happened right there. They did not like the quote. Okay, so, again, I'm modifying this one on the left, acro- in accordance to what we decide we want to do. Let's bounce back up to the top. Um, okay, so, the reason why this starts out dwelling, mixed use, commercial, instead of, as it has been suggested, just starting out mixed use, commercial, um, the methodology or the idea behind that was that, in our code, sorry, I'm gonna have to get a little bigger while I zoom way in. In our code, in the definitions, um, we had all these, um, dwellings, and they're kind of all in the same place. Dwelling, mobile home, dwelling, single family, dwelling, dwelling, single family, two family, dwelling, multiple family, dwelling, unit. So, um, that's why I thought if it started with dwelling, mixed use, um, commercial, it would fall naturally to, in the place where we're talking about all of the dwelling types. Um, if it starts with mixed use, um, it would just kind of land itself up here, um, in between lot right of way and mobile home. And I don't know if mixed use would stick out as well, or be as easy to find, mixed use, commercial. I don't know if that naturally, in the middle of all the definitions, would you would think residential.
So, what's wrong with just leaving the dwelling there?
I'm fine with it, that's the way I, I wrote it, but that's why I wrote it.
Seems like then it's all in the definitions together.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I don't know if that's a big, big deal breaker, in one way or the other, so here, we were gonna add the word "and." Affixed to the lot, and, by recording. Um, title. Sometimes it's faster to type than it is to copy paste. Um, and then, um, this, uh, twenty-five percent, um, is recorded here, and I think the, the comment was, we need to consistently have that. But it doesn't show up as a comment until you go down here. Highlighted, but I thought I saw a comment later about it also. Seems like it just wasn't written in all the zones, talking about the twenty-five percent, or something like that.
So the twenty-five percent rule applies to all buildings in a, in a rear yard or a side yard. It's not just an EADU, so if there's nothing there, it's an EADU, the EADU can't take up more than twenty-five percent of the yard. However, if there's already a garage, and a zeebo, several things collectively, that has to be talked about.
Do you want to come to the microphone, Larry? I don't understand still why it, what the point of.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because it says, proposed accessory buildings, it doesn't say anything about IADUs or EADUs.
Well, let me get to where we are here, um. So in reading, so on, well, we don't have page numbers, so on item D, is that where we are? Yeah. Accessory buildings and uses customarily incidental to and permitted, and conditional permitted uses allowed. Proposed accessory buildings, which will cover more than twenty-five percent of the rear yard, shall require a conditional use permit. So, the proposed accessory buildings that require a conditional use permit, part of that is very specific to an EADU. And our other code doesn't really address, I don't think it addresses, the other accessory buildings. So we use accessory buildings, and we use EADUs in this language, and, and my, my recommendation is that we somehow combine those, and consider that an EADU is an accessory building. And then you're, we're probably in good shape. If I could read this little type.
What if you did this? What if you said, in D, accessory buildings, dwellings, and uses, customarily incidental to the permitted, do you see what I'm saying right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That works.
That would satisfy what you're getting at, I know, because.
Right.
You, you mentioned this, accessory buildings don't, aren't necessarily accessory dwelling units, but if we put that in.
Right, then I think you're in pretty good shape.
We'd want to do it on, all of them. This is R one A. Does everybody feel comfortable with what, what we're getting at there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Make it into the mic, though, people online can't hear what's going on.
And you really have to tie it on the mic, when I watch it on YouTube, if you're talking it, you can't hear.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's on. Actually, it's interesting, because I'm dealing with a situation with this right now, inherited hills. So, there is a buyer that's under contract right now, and he's wanting to put a sixty by forty shop in the back of his, of the home, that he's purchasing. And so, Larry brought up a great point, because as I was thinking about the code, I'm thinking, does that shop represent an accessory building, or is, because it's not a dwelling unit, it's a shop.
Yeah, it'd be an accessory building.
Right, and so, I mean, and I said, well, you'll have to come to the city to get a permit, to be able to do that. Um, but, the couple of concerns that we had, is that, as you read in it, now, and, and I guess this is a great question, because, uh, the code talks about it being two feet from the property line, in the, in the rear backyard, so is that accessory building, or is that EADUs, or, I mean?
It would be any accessory buildings, and they have to be, if, they have to be ten feet behind the home, and then the setback goes to two feet.
And then two.
Depending on the zone.
So it's, I was just, kind of, when I was thinking about a sixty by forty shop, I'm like, oh, and, and I think there's gonna be a problem, because the house, I think, is twenty-five hundred square feet. So, but, but it does bring up a point about how close you are getting to a property line, in a backyard with the, you know, accessory building. And then, I mean, I, I like the way we put in there that, if it's over twenty-five percent of the, the yard space, you have to get a conditional use permit, right? As I'm reading what Larry just talked about.
Yeah.
And so, then I guess the question is, what is the conditional use permit for?
If they want to c- build something that's bigger, that's taking up more than twenty-five percent of their backyard.
So they just have to, they'll come to the city and get a conditional use permit, even though it's not for a business, it's not for anything else, it's just.
Well, they would have to come and present their.
So they have to get asset planning and zoning, and then we would decide if it was acceptable or not.
So, and I'm wondering whether this should be in this zone, in this area of the code at all. So in our, um, supplementary and qualifying rec- regulations, there is a specific chapter, that's area of accessory buildings. And it says, no accessory building or group of, of accessory buildings in any residential zone shall cover more than twenty-five percent of the rear yard. Exceptions to this requirement may be granted by conditional use permit. I'm wondering if what we, we ought to do, we either ought to, because it's, I, I don't, the paragraph only shows up in R one A. We could probab- we should probably either delete it, and then just point to this, and add our access, add the, the EDA U phraseology in this, and, and leave it out of the R one A code specifically. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that would make more sense.
Does the conditional use permit require them to get approval from their neighbors, like, others?
No, so, conditional use permit's gonna be an administrative act, that says, that they, they're gonna come in to the planning commission, um, which is, who, who grants that. Unless our code specifically says that some other body, um, grants the, um, conditional use. In rare circumstances, it's, it's given, it, it's done administratively by the zoning administrator, but most cases, the, uh, the land use authority is the planning commission, there's two cases where it goes to the city council. So, so they would come in and say, I want to do this, and i- if they, if they can show that they can mitigate, you know, problems that are gonna arise by doing that, then we grant them the con- conditional use permit. The problem with the twenty-five percent rule, and we, we did have planning commission look at it one time, and we dug into that, is it's trying to, um, and it's never stated anywhere in the code, but it's trying to keep, like, um, especially in, in your residential areas, some, um, openness, I don't know if it's for fire reasons, or something like that. We did look at one, and did a conditional use permit, and granted it, I believe, they had to do, I think they had to tear out an old building, or something, and we gave them a conditional use permit. And they got slightly over the twenty-five percent rule, but.
I was just trying to head off of potential, because that's gonna come to you, to the planning commission then, pr- probably, pretty soon. So I just, give me a heads up on that one, and I'll know what to tell them as well.
Perfect, thanks.
So, again, we can, we can add this here, or we can completely delete this, and, all accessory buildings will be governed by the same paragraph in that other section. And I would, I think that would be the most consistent way to do it, since it is already in there.
Yeah, I think we should delete it, and just put it in the main one.
So let's do this, let's,
Read.
Delete that, then let's go up, everybody okay? We're gonna add, in adjusting that code, area of accessory bu- buildings. So, let's, let's now add in specifically the, dwelling units, no accessory building, or group of accessory buildings, and then I'm gonna put in here, including external accessory dwelling units. Let's see if that works. Or we could just, you know what, let's do this, let's keep that sentence whole. And then let's add a sentence that says, this provision includes external accessory dwelling units. And then, exceptions to this requirement may be granted by conditional use permit. Should we just make it clear and say, by the planning commission? Planning and zoning commission? Everybody like that?
Yep.
Yep. Looks good.
Okay. Alright, now let's go on, so we had deleted that. And then, the next thing, and I don't understand, um, I think that the point on this is that you're getting into the, um, modifying regulations there, in, in restricting, in, in deleting these, I noticed that you deleted that in R one and R two. Um, was the intent not to limit the density, or was the intent to put it somewhere else?
No, I'm, I'm not trying to dictate, in, in any of these comments, I'm not trying to dictate decisions and densities and, and sizes. I'm really pointing to what I think may be inconsistencies in code. So if you look at, um, where this said it's limited to, um,
Four.
Four. I don't think there is a density listed. But then when you get to R one, it says the density is four, in, and the density is five in another place, under PUDs. So when you get into the PUD code, there's all these inconsistencies with this part of the code.
But it's, but it's,
But I was gonna say.
You gotta have a different density in PUD code than you would in a standard code.
Well, you just, this code in B says, subject to planned unit development approval requirements.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And, and so if you're pointing us.
And I wasn't, I wasn't necessar- that wasn't the intent, was the point, is to say that those were the same.
Oh, okay.
That was the same as that, it was just a, it was just an added statement, that was, um, in an R one, you have a density lim- limited to four. In an R two, you'd have a density listed to some, something else. I mean, you could either,
Okay.
You could either do that here, or you could do all of it in PUD code.
Yeah, well, I mean, my suggestion was do it one place or the other, or make them match.
Or make them match.
Whichever way you do it, and that's my only point there.
That's a, that's a, now I see your point. Let's go look at the PUD code in question, and figure out where the better place to do that is. Seems like it's in a weird place, in the middle of a sentence, right there.
So R one A's not listed there.
So it has five per acre in the R one zone. Um, and then it talks about the livable floor space, then it says, seven units per acre in R two floor space, and then nine dwelling units per acre in the R three zone, minimum lower, lower.
I think R three dropped to eight, maybe?
Yeah. So this was, it, thi- this was, um, going to allow for less density in the R one, and more density in the R two, if I remember right, because it goes four, six, ten?
So this, the new document.
Does it go four, six, ten, or four, six, eight? A rattlesnake that's about to bite me.
So, under fourteen, or fifteen point three oh, oh three oh.
Four, six, eight, I think.
V.
Four, six.
Talks about four, for R one.
Yep. And then R three goes to eight, four, six, eight, and this here is five, seven.
Nine.
Nine. So what would the planning commission like to see? I agree, we should make it consistent. We can either, we can either scratch this completely and spell it out in the zones. Or we can scratch putting it in the zones and do it all here. And the question is, is do we stick with the four, six, eight, or the five, seven, nine? Um, I think that there's, there's two, tha- and there's a reason why they're different. The reason is, is generally speaking, quarter acre lots in an R one, um, if you allow the cluster subdivisions, you're staying with the same density, right? And in, in a, um, P U D, P U Ds usually allow for more density, and this limits them to that density. So, um, it's just wh- however way we wanna go about it, and what do you guys think?
What, are we trying to kinda get away from P U Ds?
Yeah, and I, well, I think the main reason of getting away from the P U Ds was getting into the narrow streets and all of the, um, basically every time somebody looks at our subdivision code, the first thing they wanna do is go to a P U D because they, it allows you to get, um, extra creative on density and all of this stuff. The density really is not that much different, um.
So if we, if we keep P U Ds, then maybe we should just mandate a minimum street width to all P U Ds?
Well, what, what we're doing is we're getting rid of P U Ds with the exception of, um, the cluster subdivision.
And by conditional use, right?
And by conditional use. The question is, is at that point, what's the, what's the better density to allow the, the maximum to be? Four or five in a R one, six or seven in an R two, and eight and nine in a, in an R three?
Per acre?
Per acre.
Per acre, yeah.
Um, personally, the other thing that this little, quick little paragraph in our P U D code does, it gets into the minimum housing sizes. And we've kind of pretty aggressively modified that in the rural done right code. Personally, I think I would be comfortable with just deleting D from the P U D code and letting the different zoning say, so, the total density and the, um, minimum housing sizes. Cause, I mean, we, we, we were always at a thousand square feet on the housing size until you got under the P U D. Now we're giving them smaller houses by right in R two and R three than we hi- historically have done. There was a division of exactly how big that should be last time, but we went into, um, we allowed eight hundred and fifty square feet in an R two. And I can't remember what, R three went to seven fifty?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. But did that pass?
No. What do you mean, did that pass?
When we were voting on it last time?
No.
No.
Nothing's passed.
Well, what I'm saying is, um, the way it sits, the way the document sits as of right now is R one A and R one, sorry, it's, it's hard to see when I don't have the, um, all of the marking in there. Let's see, conditional use, height, area width and yard, modifying, size of building, oh yeah, that's right, duh, I have to go to R two. So modifying, we now have size of building, eight hundred and fifty in an R two. And then duplexes and twin homes ha- shall not have less than seven fifty on either side of the common wall. And then when we get into R three, we go down to seven fifty on the main one. And duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes are six fifty. So we've already allowed by right, less than a thousand square feet in the zone, the way it's currently written. The question then just becomes, do we deal with the dens- the density in these cottage courtyard cluster subdivisions? Do we just deal with it right here? We can put it at whatever number you wanna recommend, and then get rid of this paragraph here so that they're not inconsistent. Or do you want to delete that part of the sentence in every one of these? And, um, and then, um, deal with it here, but we still have this, you know, different lovable floor space. It's lovable, livable, lovable.
One of them should say laugh.
Live, laugh, and love.
And also in D there, you, it, right now, R one A is not addressed with any densities. R one is, but R one A is not.
Right.
Um, I'm. So if you keep that, you would, you would, might wanna add something in there.
Or you, if you delete it, it's gonna default to what R one is in the modifying regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I am fine with just deleting that. It seems like it would fit better, I don't know.
I agree.
Well, I was just gonna say and just clarify the fact that R three did not have a minimum before. And now we're putting one in.
No, it's always had a minimum.
Yeah.
No, it hasn't.
Nine dwelling units per acre in the R three zone.
Right there.
That's the existing code.
No, 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 I meant in minimum square footage requirement in building.
Right. It didn't in the zone, but the, this is one of the inconsistencies that I hated with our existing code, cause the zone never mentioned it. But in P U D, it, it, when you're usually giving more, you're getting less restrictive, it restricted it to seven fifty in an R three. Which is weird, that you don't say anything about it in the regular zone, but when you're giving them less restrictions than you put in a restriction. I, it, I, it was like, it really should've had a, a minimum square footage in all the zones, I thought. And then let this modify what that is. But if we deal with it in the zones and we're, the only time we're really using these, um, P U Ds are just very limited, and we deal with it in that cluster subdivision thing, I think we're fine. So I think if we're going to do that, um, I will add this to the bottom. It's gonna take a little work to get these two documents together. I'm just gonna have all of this here. I'm gonna accept this, so then it doesn't look like it has been changed. And then we're gonna delete that. So. Why won't it, it should strike it out. Is it tracking off? Tracking is on. All right, I'm gonna have to work on it anyway, so. Okay, delete. So, what do you guys wanna have? I mean, cause, cause we can leave it as is, or we can adjust those. Now, at that point, we're now limiting it to four in an R one, six in an R two, and eight in an R three.
I think we already had discussions on that, like, we've talked about it multiple times, we can just go ahead and move on.
Okay, everybody feel good about that?
D.
Okay, let me go back so that we're on the same thing here. We get down to the next. Let's see, R one, let's go back up here to R one. Larry, why did you highlight these in yellow?
Um, that's, that's that same comment that was addressed up in the beginning. Um, any place that I highlighted something, it was just a standout placeholder that. And the, you fixed that in the be- earlier in the document, I think. When you defaulted to the twenty-five percent rule.
Oh, okay.
That was why that, those were highlighted. So those are highlighted throughout the document for each of the zoning districts.
Okay, so, we have here under permitted uses, and, and I agree, this is a little sloppy of a way of doing this, is, I, I think if, if I'm gonna put words in your mouth, this is now a modifying, and you're saying that the permitted use should be here, and then if you're gonna modify it, put that down here.
Yeah, I, I think we're actually good to there, but i- if you go back up to D one, I just wanna, or deeper in the document, really late, like one of the last comments. I addressed the word cookie cutter, and if you look at D one, we use the terms flat or boxy look, and then elsewhere in the document, we use the word cookie cutter. And we use the word tract to define a look. And I thought it would be good as, if you're inclined, to standardize those terms, but maybe they're okay in the contexts that they are in. If I, if you were hard pressed, you could actually make a definition of that look. You could put 'em all in a definition, you could put cookie cutter, tract, something, something.
Repetitive.
Appearance, and define what that appearance is, and then all those terms could work, I suppose.
About non repetitive. Non repetitive?
Yeah.
Appearance.
Yeah, oh, that's in there too, yeah.
I mean, yeah, do, so in other words, basically, do we need to define what rural look is?
How come we're not teetering on dictating aesthetics right here?
Um, we are teetering on it, um, but what we're, what we're not doing is saying what it has to look like.
We're saying what it can't look like.
We're saying, we're saying what the goal is, to make it look more like single family, and giving some type of examples, rather than saying we're gonna regulate, um,
Architectural features.
Architectural, like, like, yeah, colors.
Specific styles.
Brick versus siding versus, yeah, stuff like that. Um, this was, these were some things that I could find, um, out there that's in existing code, that's probably been, um, um, looked at, which, which doesn't get into aesthetics.
Can't we just take off to avoid looking flat or boxy, require multiple roof pitches or heights?
Yeah.
I think, like, we don't even need to avoid flat or boxy.
Yeah, just to be.
They're, they're doing multiple pitches and height, that's gonna avoid that anyway.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we're just telling them.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just to be clear, I, on D, I don't have any real issues with the language. It was really just about the use of flat or boxy as opposed to cookie cutter or tract or non repetitive look, sort of a thing. Just a, really a minor consideration.
If, if we like that.
For, then I'll just, real quick, adjust it on all of them. Let's see here.
Yeah, cause I know one of Cindy's comments was, what was, what's to define cookie cutter, so if you just take that out and just say, avoid this. Or, I mean, just to do this, multiple roof area, yeah.
Is that going to, now I know we're in R one right now, um, but I'm assuming that this is consistent in all of the zones?
It is.
Um.
Here's R two, let me go back to R one.
R three, are we going to have issues when it comes to, like, the current subdivision that, with the manufactured homes? You can have two separate homes next to each other, but it's not like they've got multiple roof pitches.
So this is actually just in modifying, um, multifamily dwellings like twin homes and triplexes and fourplexes, is, is what this is doing.
Okay, so a single family and individual.
Single family home, they.
Does, it can be as boxy as it wants to be?
Yep, this is just an attempt to, with the intent to appear similar to a single family home.
Okay.
Okay, we've already addressed that.
So, r- right there in fifteen thirty-two oh four oh. Oh, I think you're, I think you're good. So I was confused as I reviewed that, um, we talked about height regulations, and it says same as R one zone. And then as I read the next line into, we're into the R two zone, and I was going, R one, R two, where are we? But I think we're okay there.
Yeah, we're, we're in the R two zone.
Yeah, so I think we're all right.
That's just, making it look clean and consistent. Okay, we've already addressed this one about R three, the flat or boxy.
Do you, I was gonna say, yeah, you need to cross it out. Oh, you did on that one, I see.
So I've, I've just gotta propose in R three that we don't remove townhomes. I'm fine with the four, the four max, but I just, I just think in R, R three, townhomes should still be allowed. That's my comment.
I know, what, what is the reason to take away townhomes? Like.
Someone doesn't feel it fits in the rural setting. It's too city, I guess.
To me, rural means the ability to own property, land, and open space, and I feel like if we have the four restriction in R three, like, fo- only four can be in, combined at once. We're given the opportunity to own land, and we're giving, and you're, have more of ability to maintain o- open space. So I feel like that meets rural in my definition, that's why, that's why I bring that up. You could vary it, but you could require varied, like, each unit has to have, be varied in complementary colors, not dictate the color, but you see that a lot in, in townhomes.
I like it.
But I would agree, like, an eight, an eight building townhome thing takes away from my definition of rural, but.
So, um, the question is this, um, right now, a threeplex and a fourplex, if it's kinda broken up the way we've kinda described it, I mean, it, it's not, I mean, there's a, it's, it's a slight difference from a townhome, but it's very similar. In fact, I had somebody say, well, I can build a townhome to look like what you're describing, and I said, yeah, you could, and it's probably pretty close to the same thing. Um, but you're saying an eight block townhome would be n- not appropriate, so, I mean, we can, wha- whatever you guys wanna suggest, we can put in there the recommendations and send it up. Um, but what, how would you delineate between those? You know what I'm saying? Wha- wha- what are you suggesting there? And townhomes that have a shared common wall?
Yeah.
Are different, like, you're gonna have to go through a, a P U D process or not, like, you wouldn't have to go through a P U D process, but you'd have to make sure that there was a way to, um, you know, we, like, say through the subdivision process, and then we've already talked about the lot sizes. We would have to address all of that, is what I'm getting at.
Well.
Cause townhomes usually have shared common walls.
Mm-hmm. So, could it be the fact that in R three, we have a maximum of eight single family residents per acre? That with townhomes, it could be a four and four? Is that what you're thinking, Shane?
Yeah, I mean.
Just four in it.
It's, my idea is really not changing a lot of this, but like, in R three, allowing the ability for them to have ma- maybe front doors or to get more, you know, not restricting it as much as we are in R two. I like it in R two, but I don't in R three. Probably not saying that very clearly, but.
Yeah, I follow.
Like, we're the, you know, D is pretty much cut and paste from R two, except for the triplex, fourplex thing. Cause of, what is it, twin home and duplex in R two?
Yeah, it's, it's very similar here. Um, the, the, the place where it starts to deviate is when you're dealing with everything down here in the, uh, lot area.
Mm-hmm.
As you're kind of spelling that all out, um, I think that you'd almost have to, um, As you're kind of spelling that all out, um, I think that you'd almost have to, um, you're gonna have to expand on that, um, and modify this paragraph to some degree, and then, and then, and then put in, um, up here, um, like here where we have three, triplex or fourplex dwellings having separate ownership, when approved through the subdivision process, you'd have to do something similar on townhomes. Um, you'd have to deal with a lot area, and you'd have to put something like that in, if you wanted to make that recommendation, so I, I.
I think they could, well, I don't see why you would need to change a lot, they could match that same lot area, if we're assuming there's four units.
Um, so, the problem with that is, we're saying five thousand square feet, most townhomes don't have five thousand square feet in there. Like, they have a very small backyard, and then the front yard. I mean, you're usually squeezing those things into probably half that, if not slightly less. So, if the, if the planning commissioner, so I guess, let's say this, if, if a majority of the planning commission wants to see him go back in, make that recommendation, and then we can, we can address that here, and then send it all up. If there isn't a majority of the planning commission that doesn't wanna do it, then we won't address those things. So I guess I'm just curious as to how everybody else feels.
Um, I'm kinda on the fence with it, because if we're allowing duplexes, twin homes, that can be fourplexes, that kinda serves kind of the purpose, if you're gonna allow twin homes to be a fourplex, um, it kinda seems like it serves the same purpose.
Now, there's a, there's a, a significant difference.
There is.
Because a fourplex has to be on twenty thousand square feet.
That's for feet, yeah, there is, but.
Versus a townhome that could potentially be on much smaller acreage.
But then I do like a townhome, because I feel like, feel like it's, um, affordable housing. Like, that's what a lot of people, younger people are buying these days, that's what they can afford.
So I guess the question is, is, is everybody comfortable, or is, are the majority of the voting members that are sitting here wanting to see townhomes in the traditional sense back in?
I would.
So, so obviously Shane and, and Heather would.
Hmm.
Jerry and Weston and Jamie?
I'm, I'm straddling the fence.
I, I, I'm mixed.
I'm like, I'm straddling the fence right now. Um, you know what, I, yeah, I would love to see him back in.
I agree. Okay, so the question is, this is the whole thing that we removed, apartment houses, condominiums, townhomes, townhouses, and other multiple dwellings. Um, if we, would you, we just put townhomes back in?
Yeah.
Um, let's see, we're, we wouldn't need to have.
Would, would we need to put in there the, by some, yeah, um.
The max of four?
Yeah, not to create more.
Um.
Four per block, or four per?
Per acre, right?
No, it's eight per acre lot, it, well.
Right now, our density is restricted by this. And we have defined single family homes, we've defined duplexes, twin homes, triplexes, and fourplexes. The challenge with adding townhomes back in is a fourplex and a threeplex in a townhome can be very similar. And if we add it back in, then you potentially have a conflict of what you're defining these things as.
Well, and why are triplexes and fourplexes a minimum of five thousand square feet?
Just cause we were, um, what we were s-
I just didn't know if that number came from somewhere.
Where that came from was essentially the duplex and twin home code, saying you had to have five thousand square feet for each unit. That makes it consistent, well, it basically doubles the density of what is currently in R one, which is a ten thousand square foot lot for a single family residence. And we said, okay, we're gonna let you have a twin home, and, um, you just have to have five thousand on either side of the common wall. So, it was taking that and, and projecting that forward, and sticking with five thousand per unit.
Yeah.
Multiplied by the number of dwelling units. So that gets us up to fifteen thousand on an R, on a triplex, twenty thousand on a, on a, on the other. So I would think that, again, I, I think that you'd need to define what your lot area minimums are on townhomes, but what's the difference between a fourplex of, that's looking like a single family dwelling? I mean, you almost have to scrap this whole paragraph, and then add back in some density. I don't.
Makes it a little, little tricky.
Right, and I, I don't disagree with that, because that maintains my open space rural look. I, I guess when I say townhomes, I feel like up there in section, or in D, above what are we, where we just added townhomes? Um, having the restrictions on, on them make that less affordable. And in, and in R three, I think that should be the one we're trying to make more affordable.
Mhm.
So like D right there, with the varied roof lines, and I, I know what you're trying to do, but I just think that.
Shane, if I might, sir, are you suggesting that D, the requirements in D are dr- would drive up the price of a townhome?
Hmm, I think so.
So there might be a trade off there, cause townhomes sometimes are viewed as low income housing. And, and the general public looks at low income housing, goes, oh, we don't want any of that.
So what if you did just?
Graded up a bit, it might not, you know, be as, uh, so objectionable.
What if you just deleted all of D, would that accomplish what you're suggesting doing? Cause you're allowing threeplexes and fourplexes, you're not just saying how they look at all, which would keep them, would, would allow you to do those four unit townhomes.
I personally don't like that, I feel like with a triplex and a fourplex, you're gonna get a box, and that doesn't feel like rural or anything like that. I feel with townhomes, you kinda can get more of a rural, rural facade in the front, and it's not such a box, if that makes sense. I mean, the fourplexes that we have in town are.
So I'll, I'll tell you where, where this is coming from. We had those townhomes that were permitted through the conditional use process.
Mhm.
Half the city lost their minds, saying you're ruining Parowan. And, so it kinda comes down to, and, and obviously, we can send whatever we want back to city council. I know that that's where the city council's feeling was, is that, they agreed with the people that were losing their minds, saying that that doesn't fit Parowan.
And they should drive around town, if they think that's what's ruining Parowan.
Yeah, um.
I'm just saying, that's what's driving it, where it's coming from, so we're gonna have a bunch of development potentially in R three zoned area. Do you wanna see a bunch of that, what's there? Cause that's totally permitted, that would be the type of thing that would be permitted in R three, is what they built out there, which personally, I think it's a lot better than two gigantic apartment buildings.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is, yeah, do you clarify?
Remember that conversation?
Do you clarify with them that it originally was going to be?
Everybody that I talked to, I clarify that, yes, I said it was supposed to be two twelve unit apartment buildings. And we were much happier to see the townhomes than two big box apartment buildings. We got the same density, and we got something that was much better. Still, people were saying townhomes didn't a, didn't a, didn't fit in, in local, um, in rural, sorry. But I just think that, like, this doesn't really fit with this, and we gotta deal with, with the other, um, the lot, you know, sizes and spaces, if you guys wanna make a recommendation to put it back in.
I definitely think we need D one, two, and three in there. And I think we can make it work with townhomes too, um, with just some more wording.
I'm with you on that.
So do you wanna put some design elements in the townhomes?
Uh, I would like to see, like, no more than four units can be attached together, maybe with contrasting colors. But I don't know if we can dictate that.
I don't know if we can on colors, but we could say no, we could say townhomes when approved through the subdivision process.
Each with a different facade, or altering?
More than four units together?
Yeah, can you say each with a different facade?
Or an altering?
Something like that, alternating facade?
Attached, maybe it's attached, no more than four attached units.
Yeah, well, yeah.
With varying facades, or varying?
Alternating, I don't, I don't know.
But again.
Can or can't dictate.
What's the difference between a fourplex and a townhome with four dwellings attached? Cause if you're saying these need to look like a single family home.
Mhm.
Isn't it ownership is the major difference?
So, I, I think maybe if we said, what about this, um, triplex, what if we did this? Triplex, fourplex, or townhome dwellings having separate ownership when approved. And then we could say, um, all triplex, fourplex, and townhome dwellings.
Yeah, that works.
Mhm.
I like that. I'm gonna take that out.
So.
Townhomes aren't, oh, they are gonna have separate front entries, so.
But what about your three family, four family dwelling of single ownership? You don't care if that's a box?
No, I don't want boxes, that's why it says required varied, multiple pitches, heights.
Hey, now, let's see, what do you wanna have in, okay, must have following design elements. You wanna get rid of this single family home? With the intent, and we say of, of breaking up?
With the intent, with the intent of avoiding a, whatever adjective you'd like to use, appearance?
Yeah.
Non, you know, a repetitive appearance, or a cookie cutter appearance, or a.
Not cookie cutter.
Or we could just get rid of the intent, and just say must make the following design elements, leave varied roof lines.
Yeah.
Because it was.
Yeah, so we go to set up.
The whole point of having that in there on the R two
Yeah.
Was to try and say, you're trying to keep it to look like an, like a single family home, and if you're not here, we just get rid of, with the intent, and just say, element.
Sorry, we'll leave, in order to preserve the rural look and fill Parowan.
Yeah.
Yep.
We've left varied roof lines, articulated facades, to break up massing, and separated front entries. Now, the question is, is if you do that, how do we deal with the lot area? So we have, we're good on single family, we're good on duplexes and twin homes.
Do you think we need to add something up there where we just left, uh, that says the four?
Oh, that they have to have only four attached.
In the townhome?
The townhomes, yeah.
Cause the triplex and fourplex say it in the name.
Townhomes must not have. Well, the problem with that is, then the, the colon doesn't make any sense.
Would it be just a number of four?
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
Townhomes, maximum four unit block, or four attached units? Cause it could be, yeah, less than, but.
So, real quick, on tho- those six plexes, by my house, actually, um, I think people don't like, when they drive by, they're boxing the back. But if you go inside, they're actually.
Yeah.
Quite nice.
I don't, which, I don't know where you live.
They're very nice. Four hundred, four hundred.
The new ones?
Oh, the new ones, you're talking about the new ones, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I, I look at the backside of them from my house.
As far as townhomes go, they're beautiful townhomes, I think the question was whether townhomes fit.
Inside is really nice looking.
Yeah.
You know, or townhomes.
Okay, so we'll put that there.
Those are for rent, or?
For rent.
All of them, they'll only be for rent.
So, we have now here lot area, I think we're good on, right up through here. Question is, triplexes and fourplexes of single ownership shall have lot area of not less than fifteen and two, two, twenty thousand respectively.
So, my question?
Uh huh.
Oh, oh, there we go, just read the next sentence, Heather, sorry.
Actually, these two sentences are.
Oh, they're identical.
They're redundant, they, they accomplish the same thing.
So, yeah. So with.
But what do we wanna do, though?
I would.
That was in the messiness of the other document, that was, one of those was supposed to be deleted.
I would s- I would s- suggest that we reduce the minimum square footage when it is, um, those are owned by one ownership.
Oh, that's why they're both there, is because we're saying, single ownership is, is this.
Mm. Yes, yeah.
And separate ownership has five thousand square feet each, that's why there was the two different sentences.
Yeah.
Um, but, but again, I mean, you can have three townhomes side by side, and, and if it's separate ownership, then you need five thousand square feet each, the way this is currently written. That's not what a traditional townhome usually looks like. And if, if you're wanting to have a, townhomes in here, I think that those are problematic.
So are there different, um, area requirements? I mean, are we, are you all thinking that a fourplex is four in a row? Or can a fourplex be two and two?
Well, the way it was designed originally is that it was, you could configure it kinda how you wanted, but it needed to look like a single family home.
Right, so.
That could be done sideways, it could be done stacked, it could be done deep, but you have a bigger lot to do that. If we're introducing townhomes, which are traditionally side by side, with smaller lots sharing common walls, then you have a problem with this whole paragraph.
So I'm just gonna read this, just good old Google. Um, the typical lot size for townhomes varies, um, but the common range is fifteen thirty to three thousand square feet. And, um, one of the, the, um, sightings is from Missing Middle Housing suggests the low end at the fifteen thirty.
And tell me, that was lot size, or?
Lot, lot size.
Oh, fifteen hundred and thirty square feet?
Fifteen thirty to three thousand.
See the difference? That's a postage stamp, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
I'm just reading what Google says.
Yeah.
Yeah, a grief.
Yeah, that, that.
Might be in the warp city high rise.
All that twenty five percent stuff.
But, but I mean, when you think about it, oh, it's gonna take Google a minute to load, I'll, I'll load it. I, I, I mean, it's pretty common for a, for a townhome to have a backyard that's the width of the building, and fifteen feet or twenty feet, you basically have a barbecue grill and a place for your dog.
Yeah.
Poor dog. And, and, I mean, that's, so I think that that's kind of consistent with a traditional townhome. You can have a, a little bit wider, a little deeper backyard, but that's consistent, so.
If you look at those on four hundred north, and how they're fencing them out with the block wall right now, that's about what it is.
That's about what it is, yeah. Especially cause they're usually two story, so a lot of your, a lot of your living space is spread across two total stories.
Mhm.
And then you have a, you know, ma- maybe, the nice thing about those townhomes that were just. And then you have a, you know, ma- maybe, the nice thing about those townhomes that were just built is that they have a garage and a driveway in the front, um, you know, some of them, depending on how crazy you got with your P U D, may or may not have a driveway in front of the building, or all they have is a driveway and they don't have a garage, you know, depending on exactly how that looked. What we got there was considerably be, um, better in the sense of, you know, um, a nicer type townhome than typical, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, here's, um, another thing, it says another example states that a minimum lot size of three thousand square feet, oh, yeah, lot size, um, of three thousand square feet per unit applies to a three to five continuous unit in an R three zoning district. So, if I'm rea- I don't know if I'm reading that right.
Sorry, I'm just off the top of my head, just.
Three thousand per unit.
I, I'm thinking of a.
Okay, so then that would be dropping it from five thousand to three thousand per unit, okay.
So I just was thinking of these townhomes which are up on the hill in Cedar,
Mm.
And they have these little backyards that are fenced in like that, I think that's pretty typical.
Yeah.
Of townhomes. Okay. So, what do you wanna do, what do you wanna recommend?
I don't know.
I would, I would think if you dr- if with the townhomes, if we drop it to three thousand square feet per unit, that would, um, this is separate ownership shall have a lot.
I think that's how we would go about doing that, that leaves, if you're basically having a big rental of a threeplex and fourplex, you're still having.
To give more space.
More space, and if you're allowing
Oh, yeah.
These to have separate ownership, you're gonna let the lot go down to three thousand square foot.
Promotes.
I, i-.
Land ownership for sure.
Yeah.
Yep, promotes land ownership over.
Okay.
Are we good with lot width being fifty-five feet? Essentially, what you're saying is, is fifty-five feet now becomes the minimum width of the townhome. If, if, if we don't do anything with this.
Fifty-five versus.
I don't know, I don't know what the average.
Yes, single dwelling unit? What is our current in, oh, oh, sorry? Fifty-five.
The, the thing that always I hated about this is that it says townhomes are permitted use, but I don't know how you go about having, like, they'd almost, like, you almost have to go through, through the P U D process anyways. Yet, P U D is a, is a conditional use, this is a problem with our current code, and townhomes, like, I guess they would all have to be in common ownership. Like a rental is the only way this could be permitted the way it is here. So anyways, that, sorry, that's a little side thing I was.
Yeah, which is one of the
Yeah.
Great changes that's being made.
Yeah.
Is now you can do it with separate ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No, I'm fine with the fifty-five.
Fifty-five feet is what it was before, so this would keep it consistent with that.
Yeah, I think it's, keep it consistent.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Excuse me, so if you're, before we go any farther down there, if we go back to fifteen thirty-four point oh two oh, which is permitted uses under whatever we were in, R three it looks like. So we're back to that item D in its entirety. As written, that's really written as a requirement, not as a permitted use. And you might consider moving that down into fifteen thirty-four oh six oh, which might be a better spot for it.
So, and that's what I thought you were gonna bring up earlier, um, if we did that, we'd wanna do it in R two as well. Where we're.
Yeah, well, yeah, to be consistent, but reading that, just read it, and it's clearly a, a requirement and.
You're saying. Modifying it, putting it down under the modifying regulations.
Yeah, that, I mean, I guess there may be other places, but I think it, it's really out of place where it's residing at the moment.
So it's, and I agree, it's, what it is, is it's saying you can do it if you meet the following design requirements, which is kind of, which is kind of, I agree, it's kind of weird to have all of this sub stuff here, I don't know if it's, it can't be there, we do have other places where we do that, like residential facilities complying with all the criteria and yada, yada, yada. There's a few examples, as I was looking through our permitted uses, where we put some constraints on it being permitted. Whatever you guys wanna do, do you wanna leave it where it's at with the constraints in that place? Or do you wanna just say all triplex, fourplex, and townhome dwellings? And then have modifying regulations down here where we modify what you can and can't do with it?
It means the same thing wherever you put it, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, it, it does, it's just kind of a little, little weird having modifications up here and when it's permitted.
It does, but I think that's the first thing people read.
Yeah.
Well, we do state that you, that in B and C, the single ownership and separate ownership is permitted. So, if, I think it could, D would then fit under oh six oh, the modifying.
I like it all stuck together, I don't wanna break it all up.
Okay, I'm gonna have to fix these numbers when I clean this document up. Okay, so let's move on. Um, conditional uses, we already did that, I don't know what this comment is on zone.
So, that comment is just, it needs a carriage return, uh, return inserted between zone.
Oh, yeah, no, that was just the cleanup of the document.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll clean that. Oops, I'm scrolling on the wrong one. Okay, mixed use dwellings, okay, we are, okay, so, and, and I don't think you were here Larry when I explained this, that's why it's confusing, um, I didn't wanna list the entire table and add that in.
Oh, I understand.
But it's the intent just to put it into the table.
Well, the, the only thing I was concerned with is we have an action item list or a methodology to make sure that that happens, because that table will likely get modified, maybe at a different point in time. And it reminds me of the, you know, the E A D U code, where we said we gotta do these things to the zoning districts to make E A D, E A D U's permissible, and we, we all dropped it. And I just question if.
Well, this won't, this doesn't make any sense to have it recorded, I mean, that's gonna come down to the way the ordinance is written and add it in to the table and list the entire table and add it in. So, um.
Oh, yeah, all I'm suggesting is, yeah, there's probably a list of things like that.
Meaning what? I don't understand your point. Oh, things that should have been modified.
I'm good, I'm just saying maybe there needs to be an action item list or a tracking list that says we gotta fix this in the, in the table, we gotta fix this other thing in definitions, we gotta fix this other thing. Because the impression I got is we're moving ahead with rural done right as written in this document, and all those other things are gonna fall out.
Oh, no, the entire table, and that's why I left it in here saying C table, and, um, was just gonna add this as permitted.
Oh, okay, we're good.
In the, in the ordinance, we'll list the entire table with it added, just to be consistent.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that highlighted in here, so I don't forget to do that. Okay, so building size requirements, what was the comment here, uh, mixed use dwellings? Show the residential of five hundred units located.
So, I, I mean, if I can get back to that. So, mixed use is not mentioned anywhere as a housing type or anything until we get into G C one. So, we've got that definition that we talked about earlier in the document, and I think is the first place where we make an attempt at talking about, uh, mixed use dwellings. So, it, it looked like to me as I read this, that mixed use dwellings in this district this might actually mean you could build an, a home in our, uh, single family residence or dwelling in the commercial district. Just, it doesn't preclude that. It's just a mixed use district, and this lot has a home on it, and this lot has a business, and it has an apartment upstairs. And I'm not sure that as we get into this, if that's really what the intent might be.
So, I think the intent was, um, originally, when we were t- when we had one commercial zone, was to allow the mixed use, commercial residential together. And that was clearly the intent, when we split the two zones, the two commercial zones, and I, I remember thinking, do we wanna still allow that to happen in the general commercial? So, imagine not on downtown Main Street, but would it still be okay to have a mixed use type building where you have resident or retail on the bottom and commercial up above? And I didn't see any reason why, personally, why we shouldn't allow that, but that's just, I guess, what the planning commission wants to do.
Well, and I'm not challenging that concept, what I'm asking is, so on either side of that building you just described, on another lot to the left and another lot to the right, as you're looking at that building, can I build house, a single family residence on each side of that in that district?
Yeah, the way, the way that it is now written is, is if you want to do residential use, says for buildings intended exclusively for residential use, the setbacks follow the R three zone regulations, except for mixed use resident dwellings, so this would allow somebody to, to build residential within the commercial zone.
So, so the.
They just follow the R three.
Okay, so my question becomes, is that a mixed use dwelling just, but, we don't have a definition that says a mixed use dwelling has a business downstairs and a business or an apartment upstairs? And it doesn't say whether a home in that mixed use.
We added that definition.
Yeah.
Mixed use, commercial development which incorporates a mix of uses including retail, commercial, and/or offices and residential.
Okay, and, and then what I'm just suggesting is, that doesn't describe whether they're above and below or next door, so it sounds like you can come in and build the R one on either side of that, what, what we're calling mixed use, and that's okay if we follow the R three regulations.
Setbacks.
So, and, so the, and the lot width is the same and, and that sort of a thing?
Yeah, we had discussion about that.
Yeah, so this, this would, well, it does, it'd say that the, that the, uh, residential, residential units are located above the ground floor with commercial use below.
With commercial use.
Um, this does allow for, this does allow for residential use in a, um, in a commercial zone, which our previous code didn't. And I think the main, main point of that was to preserve, um, I, I'm guessing, I wasn't here when it was created, was to try to make sure that commercial gets built out in commercial and you restrict new residential stuff in there.
Well, and I'm not challenging any of that, I'm just asking for the clarification so that I.
Well, that's wh- that's why it was done the way it was, I, and if everybody's good with it, then we can just leave it the way it is, but that's, that's why it was the way it was.
Did, do, I thought for some reason we had code right now that says you can't build residential in commercial. So are we eliminating that, is that?
Well, the only place it says it is in the definitions. And this was updating those definitions, I'm trying to rem- I thought that we had.
Yeah, we had a discussion because we talked about two hundred, is it two hundred that's commercial zone?
One hundred east.
One hundred east, it's a commercial zone that is all residential.
And this gets rid of that, that say, that says all buildings after such and such date, and it had that deleted.
Yeah, yeah.
So this would allow residential to be built in commercial.
Yeah, we had that discussion and we voted on it, so I say we move on.
Okay.
Yep, I remember doing that too. So I think.
I don't recall, I mean, I recall the discussion, but.
And I know what happened.
Yeah.
Now I, now I see what happened, when I cleaned up the document, see, I had it in there as a deleted thing in the I'm sure it's when I cleaned it up that it was in the definitions, I remember we talked about it.
No, it's okay, sorry guys, I don't wanna beat a dead horse and keep on having discussions and discussions on things that we've already talked about.
Sure, sure, sure.
Multiple times, so.
Okay, let me real quick add a note to make sure that that definition.
Well, if I need clarification, I need clarification.
No, you're fine, we gave you clarification.
Oh, you know what it was, I, now I know exactly how it was done. It was, um, it modified that dwelling, um, the one that was in there that was weird. We just modified that one completely to turn it into this mixed use, so it was handled in that other document. Um, I'm gonna, because we're, because we're, um, talking and we're combining two, I'm gonna highlight that to make sure I get back to that. Okay, so, let's go.
Well, okay.
So, if you have a question, go for it, go for it.
No, it just seems a little ridiculous that our general commercial and downtown commercial is very limited space. That why would we sacrifice any land in that area for a home unless it's mixed use? Then it's great.
So you're, so you're saying you would rather see no R three type s- s- standard just residential stuff here?
In.
In commercial, general commercial.
General commercial, general commercial, downtown commercial, yeah, I mean, if, unless we're gonna create another commercial zone where we're gonna have more opportunities, our commercial land is pretty limited.
So, but this is, again, to Jamie's point, revisiting what we discussed.
I was gonna say, we've already talked about this.
Then never mind, forget it.
Okay, thank you, we just already voted on it Heather, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, my gosh, do you want me to quit tonight? Cause I will.
I'm just saying we followed protocol and we voted on it, I'm sorry, you're on the opposite end of that.
Okay, so modifying regulations B, thirty-six oh five oh, was this something that we already discussed and was just a different iteration of it, or?
So, I don't know if you've looked at the comments, it start up, back up above at item C, where we talk about building size requirements. So if I understand that correctly, if, if a person were to put a single family residence in the commercial district, they would follow the R three code that lists what the minimum building size is. And this minimum building size of five hundred square feet would only apply to the mixed use.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There is still a lot width of fifty-five, um, feet. But yeah, it's definitely a, a variation.
So, in, somewhere in here, in this general area, we've used the condition of word use, conditional use permit to adjust a setback, and that's really not what we would use to adjust a setback, you'd have to get a variance. Because I don't think there's any, is there a place in G C one that requires a conditional use permit? Other than the historic preservation district?
Um, I, that was specifically on purpose because this dark preservation district says something about it, this was. Because this historic preservation district says something about it, this was to make it consistent with that code. But I can't rem- to the front, I can't remember now off the top of my head.
This is in the commercial district, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so, I think that came from on 200 South where the businesses are setback twenty five feet. We wanted that setback, but then here on Main Street where they're all up against, that's where we were kind of going with a conditional use permit for that.
I thought that that was just allowed in that district, at least the way I read this code. Especially when we dug in, when I dug into the his- uh, historic preservation stuff.
Oh, 'cause it's underneath the historic preservation, that would make sense.
That might take a bit of double checking, but I, I think it's a, I think it's a variance in this case. I could be wrong.
I'm wondering if this hearkens back to before we split the two districts. We could probably just get rid of that sentence altogether, or that second part. Thirty six oh four oh. Is everybody comfortable we get rid of that, as long as it's not gonna be problematic, and I'll double check it?
Yeah.
'Cause I'm, I'm thinking now that was because of the, uh, because in the historic preservation district, which is basically the downtown zone, where you're allowed to go right up to the property line, but it seems like you had to have a conditional use in order to do it. And I think that was hearkening back to that.
Yeah, so in the historic preservation code, there's no real mention of conditional use. And, and so, if you, if you won't, I don't want to belabor you with all these comments, but the, the gist of this is, the table, the table of approved uses has 100 approved uses for commercial. There's like fifteen approved uses for conditional use. And if you look at what those are, there's things like wrecking yards, hide tanning facilities, things like that, and you go, you probably would not want those in the general commercial district right on Main Street.
I'm pretty sure that that was a way to try to make the one zone work for both general commercial and downtown. Now, since we've split them, I don't think we needed it all.
Anyway, just, uh, we can move on from that, if you'd like.
We have the C table coming again, which, we're just gonna list the table in there. Um, this was for downtown commercial. Um, were we wanting to allow bed and breakfast in the downtown commercial also? So, I'll just copy and paste that in. I was just gonna put the new table in both of them, but... Is everybody comfortable with, um, oh, there it is. Uh, I'm just kidding. Is everybody comfortable with having bed and breakfast in the downtown commercial?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Seems like where it belongs. Okay, then that takes us down to the manufactured home subdivision stuff.
So, just a general comment. So, right now, as far as I can tell, the planned unit development code does not address mixed use at all. And so, contemplate that for a minute, and, and think about what that might mean. If it's, if it's not mentioned in terms of density and, and some of those sorts of things.
But if we-
If anything at all.
We've addressed the density, and I think that, you know, you get into that, I mean, we've addressed the density in the mixed use, saying not smaller than 500 feet.
Well, that's, that's, that's building size.
No, that was, that was unit, residential unit size, think of apartments.
Right, the apart- the, yeah, the unit size, 500 square feet. But it doesn't address any building density in PUDs. So, we, we talk about-
Because the only PUDs that'll be available anymore are the cluster subdivisions?
In general commercial?
No.
So, this says, modifying regulations-
In where?
And I'm reading in fifteen thirty six oh five oh, which I think is... Am I back to R3?
So, um-
No, I'm in GC1.
So, planned unit development code, um, it does address, like, you can do a, you can do a business use, um, there, there's nothing that specifically says mixed use in there? I don't know if it needs to, but maybe it does, is that what you're saying?
So, this particular B on fifteen thirty six oh five oh says, "Mixed use dwellings must remain under single ownership unless approved through the planned unit development process per our code." And going, I, I don't think there's any provisions in our, um, planned unit development code to address mixed use dwellings. I, I don't think the words even mentioned in the PUD code. So, it would-
Probably not.
So, it means there must be some other provisions in there that would be, have to be interpreted every time there was an application.
And, and then, I mean, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to go through our PUD code anyways, um, but, and, and talk about how, um, really how it would apply to the three remaining uses of it, and make sure it's consistent.
Yeah, yeah, that there's something in there, if you're, if we're gonna point at it. If we're not gonna point at it, then you, you could get by without doing that. But if we point at it, there should be something there that, some words that tie in.
So, I would make a suggestion that we come back and deal with the planned unit development code at another time, 'cause I, I, I suspect there's probably some parts of that need to be addressed.
That sounds good.
And so, the other part of that is, and you already know this, and, and I think you already intend to fix that, so in the table, there is no DC1 district.
Right. Wait, in the table?
In the table of approved uses. It's in pla- a brand new district, so there's no DC1 heading. We have, we have commercial, or we have general commercial, industrial-
Would you say that, are you talking about in the top of the title?
Well, just, if we go to the table of uses, across the heading on that-
Oh, yeah. No, yeah, we, and we'll update that as we're updating our, our general plan, and we're updating our zoning map, and actually applying it anywhere, we'll, we'll update the table and the, everything at the same time.
That's a, a long wait, if you're gonna wait till you do your general plan, because-
But it's not even usable until it's anywhere on the zoning map anyways, in, which is a function of that general plan.
Okay.
So, we're, and, and we talked about that last time. Are we okay putting it in the code, knowing it's not anywhere on the map, and we actually can't use it anywhere while we're at it? Because otherwise, then you're coming back and revisiting what we're at. So, if we intend on doing that, we do need to look at the general plan at some time anyways. Like, we could wait and put this in at that point, or we can put it in now, knowing that it's not usable until it's somewhere on the map.
Yeah.
So, that's, again, something that we discussed by this board, and we decided to put it in. Okay, so we are to, um, manufactured home subdivisions, I was just starting to make that consistent, affixed to lots. While, while individual manufactured homes, affixed to lots are regulated as conventional housing. Um, the intent is to ensure that such developments align with the rural character of the community by avoiding, avoiding uniform repetitive designs. And I think that you were saying there that it should be consistent language. And I think this is, um, this is more in that purpose, you know, type of a thing. Um, is that what you were saying on that?
Yeah, that is simply highlighted, along with that, you know, the use of cookie cutter and tract, and, and in this context, it's probably okay.
Yeah.
On the purpose.
I don't like using the word cookie cutter, so I agree with you there.
Okay, um, and then it must comply with the now, so what was the comment on, on definition?
So, that definition just needs to match all the other ones. So, you have a definition of a manufactured home, I think, back at the very beginning of the, this whole document. And those two, I think, should match.
Okay, I like it.
Yeah.
Location and use, um, this was the same thing. Wait, 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 what is this? Let's see. Individual manufactured homes outside of these subdivisions are regulated as conventional housing. Um... It's, um, probably good to be, oh, it really does not like it when you copy and paste a quotation. Okay, that's just fine. Okay, wrong with that. And, didn't like, and... Commission.
Um, just, right there, the question is, is it really, is it both?
Um, all subdivisions are both.
Okay.
Because the subdivision review committee does what it does, and then it flips the planning commission for the public hearing and the administrative approval, and then the rest of it's finished with the SRC. So, that's why I left it that way. Um, variation in home design to avoid a cookie cutter or tract home appearance. Now, this is different than the other, this is talking about really kind of layout of a subdivision. Um, if you, and we talked about that word, and we decided to leave it.
Yeah, I agree.
Remember that?
Yep. And I just was under the impression that you liked that word so much, it was gonna permeate the document.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's why I highlighted all those other terms.
Larry, I don't like that word either, but I wasn't here, so I was gonna say. I'm like, I don't get a say.
So, really, the comment on, uh, fifteen forty seven oh six oh D. So, this is the one place where I might be trying to influence your thought process. And right now, we, the city seems to get beat up fairly regularly by developers when we talk about open space. Now, as the planning commission, you already have the authority to insist on some number for open space. And that number is typically somewhere around 10%. And when we bring that up, we get pushed back and say, where does it say that? Where does it say that? Where does it say that? And we can't really point to it. And really, I think it would be a really, really good idea to put some number in there, and then, but word it carefully, so that whatever that number is can be, may be modified by the planning and zoning commission, or the city council, or however you want that to play out. But really, now is the time when we're making all these changes, and you want these things to apply to future subdivisions? Let's put it in there.
So, I don't disagree. My only question is, is we're not modifying the subdivision code right now, we're modifying the zoning code for rural done right. Um, do we want to, and we've already had the public hearing on what we're doing, this would represent opening a different section and modifying it? We probably ought to have another public hearing if we were to do that. I don't disagree. I, I don't like the fact that we don't have any of that in there, it was recently pointed out by the Meisner's, um, engineer.
Again, yeah.
And so, it'd be good to have something like that, I just feel like we didn't talk about it, we didn't have it out there for the public to review when we did a public hearing. It would probably necessitate a second public hearing. Um, we could send a recommendation on to the city council, and it, let them do a second public hearing and, and deal with it? Actually, no, because-
No.
You gotta do a public hearing with the planning commission, that's what's required by law, before you make a change the land use law.
Yeah, if we didn't notice that, actually.
So, I think that we would need to do another public hearing, so, if we were to modify that at this point.
I'm okay with doing another public hearing, I think it needs to be added, like Larry said.
Um, the question is, is can we send this on, as, 'cause this is a different thing than modifying the subdivision code for that. Like, we, I would like to see us send this on to the city council to work on this, and if we wanna deal with that, it's essentially an entirely different issue.
Oh, okay.
And we can have a public hearing and modify that at the same time.
Does that work?
'Cause I, I agree, I, I think it needs to be-
Yeah.
And, but we also need to do a little bit of research, what we want. What do we want for open space? Or park requirements, or something like that. 'Cause, so it'd probably be good, what I think we should do, put it on the next agenda for a discussion, and decide what we want to see, and then we'll have something for the public to review, put it on a public hearing, have that conversation, and then send it up. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dan, are you, just for clarification, are you saying to have this on a public hearing together?
No, I'm saying, let's send this up to the city council, rural done right. Rural done right is different than open space in subdivisions. But next meeting, let's have a discussion on open space requirements in our subdivision code. And if we want to tackle it, both in the subdivision code and in the PUD code. Other than PUDs, the only real open space that'll be addressed in PUDs anymore will be in that cluster subdivision. Other than that, it's more of a major subdivision type.
So, you're saying you have to have two public hearings?
Well, we've already had the public hearing on this.
I know, but you're gonna be doing some modifications, so is that gonna warrant having to have two public hearings? One for the modifications, and one for the subdivision for the open space?
I'm saying, there's only one more needed public hearing, if-
'Cause we wouldn't be modifying this.
'Cause we're not modifying this-
Again.
Again. We would just, that would come through as a totally different recommendation to modify our code. Different than in the rural done right. Does that make sense? Let me re-
Yes and no.
Let me restate one more time and see if we're on the same page. We have not talked about modifying the subdivision code-
Okay.
With rural done right. We've been modifying the zoning code.
Okay.
And this recommendation to modify the zoning code for open space requirements, um, we have not notified the public, we have not even discussed what we want that to be, so there's no way that we have satisfied the requirement to have a public hearing on that.
Okay.
So, we can delay this, which I don't think you want to do, rural done right. I'm saying, let's send this up, let the city council finish its rural done right stuff. Next meeting, we have a discussion on open space requirements on modifying the subdivision code, and then we'll have a public hearing on that. And then we will modify the land use code for subdivision in chapter fourteen on open space, and that'll come back as a separate, total separate item.
Okay. I, I understand, but are you making enough modification sense the last public hearing to warrant another public hearing?
Yeah, 'cause we haven't even talked about chapter fourteen or subdivision code or anything.
I know, but I mean, our public hearing we had prior, we're making some changes, proposed changes to what, what-
Oh, on the rest of this stuff?
Yeah.
So, that's the question. I mean, I think we've been pretty mu- So that's the question. I mean, I think we've been pretty much into the little ticky tacky stuff. Um, I guess, I mean, I mean, we added townhomes back in. That's a, that's kind of a bigger, bigger deal. So, so what you're getting at is do we need a public hearing on that?
Yeah.
Since we've made a big enough change. I get you now, sorry.
Yeah, that's where I-
Now I understand what you're saying. I don't know what everybody thinks on that.
Okay.
But we did downsize the townhomes to mixed use.
Yeah.
From four blocks to four units.
Yeah, to four units, yeah.
I wouldn't think you'd need to.
I'll tell you what, Dave, I think we should have a public hearing with the city council, just to cover our bases since we've had enough modifications. We didn't have, we did have a few comments, none of them were about townhomes specifically. I think if you had another public hearing, you'd be good. At the city council level, before the city council adopts rural done right. Does that sound good?
Can they adopt it the same day that you have a public hearing?
Yeah, I think so.
You can adopt it the same day as you have a public hearing, yes.
So that's the whole thing?
No, we just need to notice the public hearing, um, with enough time, so, and it wasn't on this city council agenda that's being proposed anyways. It was gonna be in-
Yeah, you wouldn't have enough time.
Two weeks, yep. But we could note, we could do a public hearing and, I mean, it, it, there's nothing that says, our, our code says that we c- we can have a public hearing at the city council level, and if you've had a public hearing there, then I think you've satisfied it. Wouldn't be a bad idea, so. Okay, so the question is, is do we have, um, this was, th- these were the, the, um, suggestions that, um, that, um, Larry had sent to Heather and, and Heather sent to the group. Was there, and we, and we dealt with Shane's, uh, deal on the townhomes. Wondering if there's any other stuff that had come out of any of, anybody else's research in the meantime.
Nope.
Then I rest.
All right, anything else from anybody? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to pass the rural done right modifications.
You'd send a positive recommendation?
Positive recommendation. To city council.
I second.
Somebody wanna redo that?
Callie, how you feel about that?
I won't be offended if you do.
You did, you didn't do any expectations.
Let's redo that again. Yeah, let's, let's, I can't.
Go ahead. Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, just a positive recommendation to the city council.
Nothing fancy on it.
Yeah, and then Jerry seconded it. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of the opposed, all right, and then I'm looking for another-
Still having to vote there?
Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we do.
Second.
Still got, still got four.
All of them favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion adjourned. Thanks for coming on.
Arrgh!
I'm hard-nosed.
Aye. Arrgh!
Yeah, it is what it is. That's all what it is. Or as I like to say, it's what it is.